Okay, so the recording should be starting any minute. So Katie, to start out with, if you would just give us a little bit of background on yourself and why you decided to make this run for school board and maybe some of your experiences that you think will lend themselves well to service on the board?
Yeah, certainly. So yes, I'm Katie Jones. I guess to start out way from my childhood, I grew up in small town Wisconsin, not very far away from Dubuque here. So Dubuque was always the big city that we came to. I moved, I am a product of public education and my father is a member of a union. He retired from the IBW in, I think, October of 2019 from UW-Plattville. So I'm also very aware of the important role that unions play for these kind of careers, for teachers, for, and the benefits that they hold too. I am, I went to school in La Crosse, Wisconsin, got my nursing degree. And my first job back was here at Mercy One in Dubuque. So I have six years of floor nursing experience here in the community. I think that's really helpful. I learned a lot about, you know, the community resources that we have here in Dubuque through that aspect and cared for many of the different populations that we hold too. Let's see, I, after, I left Mercy One when we had, about a year after I had our first child and was a stay-at-home mom for a little while, I did volunteer a summer at Camp Albright Acres. I guess I didn't volunteer, it was paid, but I was a nurse there as needed to fill in for them. Really enjoyed working with the developmentally disabled population as well and learned a lot that way. Let's see, then, yeah, I've been home with, I have two children now. One, Aubrey is at Irving Elementary in the second grade and my youngest is five and he'll be enrolling in their kindergarten program next fall. So I guess that way I'm, you know, deeply invested in the school system. We have no plans of moving or anything like that. So I'm just kind of dedicated, you know, to maintaining the excellence that they have attained and want to see things grow and for both my children and the rest of the children in our community. I'm also able to see the direct impact and that the policies and procedures that they put in place have on our kiddos. Let's see, what else can I tell you about myself? Okay, choosing to be a nurse is, you know, you're kind of choosing a career, a life of, however you want to say it, caring or giving to others, serving. I think that's part of the reason why I also joined the Board of Health during the pandemic last August to help, you know, the community get through that. And running for school board kind of seemed like a natural step that way. And what a time to have a healthcare professional in, on the school board to, after we've seen how important, you know, public health really is to the community and the wellness of the community as one. I also see as a nurse, there's a lot of similarities in my profession as well as, you know, the teaching profession. We're both always assessing needs, making appropriate interventions. We're always working with staffing shortages and trying to provide the same outcome. We are caring for people in our community of all backgrounds. And we've also been on the front line together for the last 18 months. And I guess I just want to work hard and make sure that the teachers and the staff are, you know, receiving the support and getting their needs met too. So they can fill their cup and still be able to come to school and give, give more of themselves.
When you had an interesting vantage point with being on the County Board of Health through this, as you mentioned, as well as being a parent and having, you know, being able to see kind of everything the district's been through in the last year and a half. Can you talk a little bit about the handling of that and what you think the district did right? And if there's anything that maybe you would have opted to do differently?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, you know, last year specifically, they did a great job of, you know, they provided the online, the hybrid as needed. And they were so flexible with, you know, parents taking their kids out of hybrid and online and then going from online to, and I'm sure that wasn't easy, especially on those teachers and the paras. But they made it work and never said no to anyone who, you know, needed or wanted those things. I think they did a good job, you know, adjusting with the flow. You know, as we know, the pandemic's a very fluid situation. You know, masking was appropriate last year, especially during the peak. When we surged last year and our whole community really came together to do that as one, which really did, you know, make a significant impact on the hospitals and the healthcare professionals. So that was great to see. I guess, you know, I would like to work better as a community. We need better testing in our schools. You know, we have the allotted funds from the COVID relief package, both the school and the county do. So it's my understanding that we could even, the school district could even, you know, work with the supervisors in the county to get some of their ARP funds. And we could actually get like rapid testing machines in each of the buildings would be beneficial. You know, it helps not only give an accurate description of what the spread is in our schools, right? Because the dashboard is great and I'm very happy that they're doing that. But without testing, those really aren't an accurate picture. So by having those machines, by providing more testing, it also takes, you know, the stress and the burden off the parents. Especially when testing kits are so difficult to find. You know, I have heard of parents running around in the evening from pharmacy to pharmacy trying to find a test and there aren't any available. Or if you go to, you know, say Epic here to get a rapid test, that's $75 to get a rapid test. That's a lot of money, especially, you know, for just one pop. And a lot of families don't have that kind of money to just spend. A lot of families don't have insurance to run to acute care to get a test. So I think it would relieve.
And now the district's talking about doing the at-home tests that they would send home?
Yes.
What do you, you think that kind of fills that void or?
I think that that is a great step. I know that they are hoping, from the email that we received as parents, they're hoping that that will help the families, you know, who definitely can't afford it or who have more barriers to testing. So I think that is good. It's a good step. There's also more turnaround time for those. So, you know, that's an inconvenience for the families too. So now we still have to figure out three days of maybe isolation and, you know, quarantine in between the time of a possible negative test. So I, I think it could help more that way, but I do think that's a great step and a great answer for what they have right now. I also realize that their resources, you know, have been cut significantly from last year's pack, you know, help from the state as far as mitigation goes to. So I understand that they're in a difficult situation. But that's a great area where we can, you know, use the community resources too that we have available. You know, with the VNA, the Visiting Nurses Association. I know that they're more than happy to help and with contact tracing too, to be more efficient on that. You know, there's been cases where the contact tracing hasn't been completed until it's like eight days out. And at that point, what, why are we even contact tracing, right? So, so just getting more efficient that way. You know, contact tracing is 72 hours should always be the goal. And then if we can put out a clear message to the families too of how to isolate, how to mitigate or quarantine, sorry. I think that would be beneficial, you know, here are the CDC guidelines. Most people want to do the right thing, right? Nobody wants to endanger children or, you know, have that guilt weigh on them of, you know, did I give this person COVID who, you know, maybe is an at-risk population or something? So I think just providing the education, the information and the support around it would be helpful as well. I think those are good steps. Do you want me to continue?
That's good. We can, we can jump in a little bit here. So obviously went through the, the school district went through a difficult time trying to determine about masks this year. I guess I'd like your take on, on how that, that kind of whole process played out and was handled. And, and hearing all the feedback that they got from parents, how, how would you have, have voted? Were you sitting on that board now?
Yeah, you know, they were tossed into a really difficult situation. And I heard Tom Barton say it best a couple of times, you know, we are not experts. We're not in the health profession, but we're being forced to make these big decisions about it. And I think that's probably why he abstained from voting. But I guess that's just speculation too. So I, I do think it was handled probably with the best that they could. I think during the open meeting, it could have been controlled a little better. You know, no student should be getting heckled for speaking. It's hard to imagine that those people had the best interest of students in mind when they're yelling at children. But I think, I don't think masks have to be the end-all, be-all. You know, they are an important piece of mitigation, especially when transmission is rated high in our county. You know, there's not a division, a line between our school district and the community, right? If the transmission is high in the community, it's high in the schools as well. So we can't draw a distinct line between that. I understand it's a hot topic and nobody wants to be wearing a mask. But I do think, you know, proper education and just standing up and being positive role models for our children would be a huge step, a huge advantage that we can make it work. We can also make exceptions for those, you know, with hearing impairments or sensory disorders, things like that where masks don't work, you know, there's other things that we can do such as, they may not be quite as effective, but you know, face shields or the panels in between kids, more social distancing, right? So the masks are just a piece of the puzzle. You know, last year they did a good job of during high transmission, which we're in now, of keeping kids in pods so that, you know, if you were contact traced, it was more limited. More frequency annotation, better contact tracing. So it's just all the things that need to come together as one.
You think the, the plan to, to look at the, the levels, the number of cases by building and then institute a mandate, should it, should it get high in a, in a given building? Do you, do you find that sort of compromise to be acceptable?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of different things to take into consideration such as confusion. For parents, I know, you know, on the Board of Health, we struggled with that a lot, you know, just keeping things to flow easily, like from the city of Dubuque versus the entire county of Dubuque. Well, am I supposed to be wearing a mask here, but then I can take it off there? And where, you know, things do get confusing for the public. So just making sure that there's clear guidance is important. As well as, you know, I'm not sure where they got the 3% from. But like I said, more testing would be helpful to be able to go on that standard of percentage. But I do think, yeah, there needs to be some common ground and during periods of high, you know, it's kind of like a dance. So during periods of high transmission, we need to all come together as one and really do our best, you know, with the mask and contact tracing, the pods. And then, you know, as things lessen and ease up, then we can kind of do away with those things.
I think you're on mute, Dustin. Sometimes this computer will, will mess up. You're gonna have to jump off and jump back on or something? I don't know. So when we talk about, you know, how things have gone through the pandemic, obviously kids and learning, that's, that's been a big challenge. What do you think about the plans the district has in place to help get kids caught up that, that really kind of fell back during, during the pandemic?
Yeah, I think my daughter was in first grade last year. So they did do a free summer program for the month of July. And that was wonderful. It was really beneficial. It also provided, you know, two meals a day for kids with food insecurities, which I think is also important. I think we realized how important that was during, through this pandemic too. I think that hiring of the social emotional position is a really great step forward in that. And let's see, I guess I would like to see those things continue. But I think, yeah, they're, they're doing a pretty good job.
I was just asking about catching, catching kids up since the pandemic, Dustin. I don't know. Can we hear you now?
Can you hear me?
Yep, good.
Okay, okay. Maybe that's, that's a kind of a good segue here. So one of the things that our school district leaders talk a lot about seemingly every year is state funding. And, you know, as the state lawmakers are kind of trying to decide what kind of aid package to put towards schools in recent years, our local school district leaders have been saying that it's not enough, you know, they're, they're really struggling. At the same time, we have done stories that prior to the pandemic. So, you know, obviously the pandemic has shifted things quite a bit. But prior to the pandemic, that the school district staffing levels were continually climbing. So they kind of, it was an interesting situation where our school district leaders were talking about having, not having enough money at the same time that they continued to add staff. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, obviously things are a little bit different now in COVID. Hopefully, you know, at some point in the not-too-distant future, we get out on the other side here, what your thoughts are on kind of how the district is using its money, general staffing levels in the district, that sort of thing.
Okay, yeah. I guess I'm a firm believer, you know, that public dollars should stay with our public schools. I think the more funding, always the better. I did meet with the superintendent and he kind of explained to me, obviously I am learning a lot with the school board right now too, but, you know, that there's different silos of where they can take money out of. So, you know, they only have so much that they can pay for teachers and then they have so much that they can pay for buildings and so forth and so on. So I guess, you know, needing more resources and programming would be different from adding teachers and staff. But it, I am aware too that, you know, there's a big teacher shortage coming. And I can't remember the exact data, but I have been reading, you know, that it's like 10% less teachers going into the field. And then it's, it's something, it's like not quite 50%, but they don't even stay in the career because, you know, the pay is not great and the work is hard. And so what incentives are they getting or increases are they getting to want to stay in this role? And I'm sure that, like you said, the pandemic has put more of a weight on teachers and the staffing as well. I guess it's my belief, from what I hear and what I see, I think that we need better, better programs, you know, to retain our teachers and to attract teachers. I heard that there was an opening at Bryant Elementary this year. And usually they have, you know, maybe a couple of years ago or even 10 years ago, they'd have many candidates and this year they had none. So, I mean, I think it's a real problem that we're going to be facing.
And as, as a school board member, I mean, what, what's kind of in your purview or what would you advocate for to kind of address those issues?
Yeah, so for recruitment, I would say, like collaborating with local universities and our colleges to help establish, I think they're called, develop, professional development schools or other meaningful partnerships with them would allow, you know, early access for people who are interested in becoming teachers to our buildings. And it would also allow the K to 12 schools to, you know, get perspective or see who might be a good candidate for hire in the future. I think that, you know, if we introduce kids at a younger age to our district, they'd be more apt to stay in our district versus finding a job elsewhere. I would say better wages. I looked in, I think the base wage for a starting teacher is like $37,000, which we have to do better than that. And also if we increase steps for experienced teachers would be some good incentive, some good attraction. To also like an orientation program, their induction program to make it more attractive, make it more attractive, more relevant would be beneficial. And then providing teachers, you know, like with their continued education or professional development, things that are exciting and engaging, better context to what they're teaching. And instead of allowing teachers to develop their own relevant learning plans or lesson plans versus, you know, teaching to standardized testing, making sure they're, we're teaching to the kids' needs and not test scores. I, I think the teachers would find that more attractive as well.
I'll jump in here again. It's interesting that you bring up standardized testing. I think there's always kind of a push and pull there. I mean, so if, if you kind of loosen the reins, you know, in the sense of, of, you know, really looking at standardized tests as a benchmark, what, what kind of benchmark do you have? How do you, how do you assess if children are learning and if teachers are doing their jobs?
I think that standardized testing, there's a place for it. I think it's good. But I don't think it needs to be, it's, it should be used as a tool, an assessment tool for the teachers. So, and the school districts, so they can see, you know, where we're at or where the achievement gap is, who needs more help and how do we give them that help? But it shouldn't be, you know, the reason why they, because everybody has different needs. You know, everybody learns differently. So basing it on just standardized testing doesn't really meet the needs of all of our kids.
I was, I'm going to change topic and I don't want to interrupt Amy or Dustin here. So were there any follow-up questions?
Go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, something kind of along the lines of, you know, you've talked a lot about COVID, the pandemic, physical health. But something that we're hearing a lot more about is brain health with students. And I just wanted to get your, your thoughts on that, how that can be approved upon in, in the schools? And if you have any specific ideas on how to do that?
Yeah, um, thank you. So, yeah, the teachers that I have spoken to are just keep talking about the increase in behaviors that they're seeing. I also have a sister who, she's up near the Twin Cities and since they came back to school, they're just, it's all hands on deck. And I mean, they've had teachers with broken arms and it's just unacceptable things that are happening with these behaviors. And, you know, it's becoming, my sister, for example, she's, does no longer feel safe going to her school and being there. And that, I just don't want to see that happen to our schools as well.
You mean like kids acting out in violence kind of thing?
Yes, yes. And, you know, over the pandemic, since the pandemic has began or begun, because there was such little time spent in school, unfortunately, our kids really experienced, you know, like adverse childhood experiences, which are everything from, you know, their, the food insecurities that they had, poverty, violence in their homes, violence on the streets, living in unsafe environments, the list goes on. And unfortunately, being out of school, they're more present to those situations, out-of-school barriers, you know, that negatively impact their learning now too. So then they come to school and we ask our teachers, like, how do we help them? Or you need to help them so they can learn, but we aren't giving them the resources for that. So we're asking our teachers to be mental health workers. We're asking them to be social workers, to be counselors. When our teachers need to be able to teach, that's what they signed up for. And they're just giving so much more and getting put into some difficult situations, I think. So we need to hire people who are trained professionally in de-escalation of these kind of events. Also giving more training and tools to the teachers and para-professionals that we do, that we do have now. But yeah, counselors, social workers. I think the district has done a good job and they've added, let's see, two or one brain health room in each of the high schools. And so I think they're doing a good job of kind of taking that stigma away from brain health and, you know, trying to promote awareness in brain health. So I would like to see that continue. I would like to see, you know, addition to those in the middle schools, definitely next, and possibly the elementary schools. So more funding towards those types of areas where we're seeing heightened issues. But yeah, we just need more hands-on. We need more staff, more paras. Also giving education and partnering with community resources to help out. You know, like they did the Challenge to Change yoga program for, prior to the pandemic, of course, which gives kids different tools, you know, more mindfulness, more awareness, teaching them meditation, deep breathing exercises, education around proper nutrition and, you know, how much that affects our wellbeing is, you know, and getting them out and moving and getting some of that negative energy out as well. You know, and getting them out and moving and getting some of that negative energy out as well.
When you talk about increases in staffing like that, I'm sure it will, it comes down to funding. Um, is that, do you have any thoughts about maybe what the, the district is spending money on that? Uh, could be used instead for, for more of those. Trained social workers or, or counselors, some of the, some of the folks that you think might make a difference?
Well, you know, I, I can't say for certain. That they are spending money on something they shouldn't, because I'm, you know, every thing is needed, um. But they could definitely, uh, utilize some of the funding that they've gotten for COVID relief towards these positions and. You know, I realize that that's temporary, but if we do find them effective, um. That, you know, there's room down the road to make changes in, um, funding or the allocation of funds. To, uh, maintain those positions.
Have you had, uh, much opportunity to get around to buildings in the district? Any thoughts on the, kind of the state of repair of our, of our buildings and what? What we, I mean, they've talked about a lot of different options down the road, possibly even. Closing some schools and, and creating new schools that'd be more efficient, um, any, any thoughts on that area?
I am aware of some of the, you know, some of our buildings are very old and I've heard. Uh, one maintenance person say about a school, you know, be easier to just clo- knock this building down than to. Um, you know, try to repair it, so there's. I think in the neck, upcoming years, there's definitely, that's gonna be a high priority on the agenda, um, to get done. I have also heard talk about, like, as you said, um, combine, combining some of the schools, um. Turning the three middle schools into two middle schools and I, I mean, I see benefits to that, um. It would reduce, you know, some overhead costs of, you know, just the day-to-day use of a building, right? Um, the electrical and all the bills that are paid, um. If you did it correctly, like Jefferson to, um. Roosevelt, yes, um, you know, those schools, half of them come together anyway, so they would be. Working with, you know, their peers at an earlier age, forming connections, um, that way, and then when they go on to. High school, there wouldn't be that gap, um. I, I could see where it would be beneficial to do that, but I would have concern about. Taking our schools and moving them out to the outer boundaries of, um, Dubuque, just because. You know, that provides more challenges for our families who have more barriers or. Um, we need to keep, you know, the access to them easy, that would provide, that would just create, I feel like more. Transportation issues with busing and we already have a shortage of bus drivers and so we would need to. Um, be careful of the location of any new building that would go up.
And assuming some, a change like that would be, you know, probably a, a few or several years down the road. Uh, any thoughts about the immediate need for air conditioning? Is that something that you think should be a high priority or? It's kind of a, kind of a tough one to invest the money when, when a change, a bigger change is coming, but.
Yeah, that is true, um. I feel like maybe they. Get a long-term plan or how many years down the road are we looking at? Whether or not installing air conditioning is worth it or. I do feel like it would benefit, um, not only the children, but the teachers, the staff as well, you know, it's difficult to learn in a. Facility where you're just sweating and miserable, um, the whole time and now wearing a mask, you know, that's. Um, really difficult and some of those older buildings and the air circulation isn't great, um. And, you know, just for all illness, not even talking about COVID, you know, respiratory wise and the, um. Having better circulation and ventilation like that would make a difference, so I am definitely for that, um. But making sure, yeah, we have a set plan and that it's cost-effective.
Any, uh, any other thoughts, uh, Dustin or Genevieve that, that you want to run by, Katie?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here, so, um. Have, uh, have a lot of interest in these seats, got, have seven people running for, for thirty seats, um. You know, we're, we're writing stories, we're, we're covering it, there's a forum coming up, um. But when you're talking to voters, I mean, how do you, what's, what's kind of your pitch? How do you differentiate yourself from the other folks, you know, running for these seats? Uh, what, why should people put you in that chair?
That's a good question, um, yeah, so, um. I think that I can bring to the board a different perspective than what they've had before, um. You know, as a nurse and as a. Person who now has experience in public health, um, you know. Public health covers so much more when people hear the word public health, right? They just think COVID now, but it's really not the case. It's, um, you know, it's creating like a safe environment, so, um. Do our kids have a safe home environment to go home to, you know, where those social workers come in handy, um. Do they have proper housing? Do they have a home? Uh, do they have access to routine vaccines that? Are mandatory for our public schools, like can we bring those to them versus them having to seek out these vaccinations? Um, it, you know, health and wellness, putting a spotlight on that and food security, um. Education around, um, nutrition and creating lifelong healthy habits, you know, there's also an epidemic of obesity in. Our young, younger population and it's a crisis that we see in the healthcare field a lot and. Those types of things, you know, set up also bad behaviors for our kids, you know, they feed into all of that. So, um, and then also brain health, you know, I have had experience during my rotations. I, you know, you do a psych rotation, you do, um, when you're in nursing school, so. I, you know, and then there's not very many psych beds in hospitals, so. You care for those patients out on the floor too, and so I've had a lot of experience with different behaviors, um. And creating awareness around that, taking the stigma away and just helping, um. To give the proper tools and resources for our children and our staff to have a safe and healthy environment is really what. I stand for most of all.
Is there, is there anything else, Katie, that maybe we haven't asked about that, that you wanted to, uh, to get out there? How, how have you been, uh, campaigning or, or connecting with voters?
Yes, well, social media, of course, is always, uh, an easy one these days, um, so I do have a Facebook page, uh, Katie. For Dubuque School or Katie Jones for Dubuque Schools that people can like and follow, um. I, I'm sure you've seen yard signs around town where, um, all of us are doing a solid for the yard sign. Business these days, um. Let's see.
Are you like knocking on doors or something to get like feedback from constituents?
Yeah, reaching out, uh, to teachers, local teachers that I know, um. Definitely going to community events, I've done some, uh, speaking at neighborhood meetings, um. Just, uh, yeah, being out and amongst everyone with my kids, um. Just being in the community in safe settings, of course, and, um. Let's see, what else? I'm doing the forum tomorrow night, um, for the Women League of Voters. And I've been, you know, doing all the union, uh, work, work with them and their process of interviews. So, um, doing some mailers, things like that.
Well, we really appreciate, uh, your time with us, taking the time to talk with us today and, and your willingness to, to step up and get involved. Both in the Board of Health and the middle of a crisis and, and on the school board, so, you know, a lot of people. Have, have a lot to say about things but never put themselves out there, so appreciate what, what you've done there.
Yeah, thank you and thank you guys for your time, so I hope to earn your vote.
Thanks, well, we wish you luck the rest of the way.
Thank you.